Great, all right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Camden Select Board meeting for October 20th, 2020. Before we go into our agenda, just a reminder for everybody for the record, next month, November, the Select Board meeting will not be on the first Tuesday, November 3rd, because of election day. It will be on Wednesday, November 4th. So, just for the record. With that, we will begin our agenda for this evening, starting with public input on non-agenda items. Janice, I don't believe we have any. Is that correct?
No, we do not.
Okay. Item two, we don't have any public hearings. Item three, we're looking for approval of two meeting minutes, because last time we tabled the September 15th minutes, and tonight we are adding the last meeting, October 6th, 2020. Select Board comments? Mark?
I've read through both of them. There were some adjustments made that we asked for, to a couple paragraphs for the first meeting, and I'm fine with those. So unless any -- and I'm fine with both numbers. If anybody has any other comments, I'm ready to make a motion that we approve both meetings.
Any other comments, Select Board? Allison?
Sorry, I just got a letter. It looks like we borrowed the third meeting. Did you discuss any changes in the minutes at all?
No.
Well, I discussed that there were changes made to the first one, and the two paragraphs that we identified last time that needed to be changed, and they have made some changes.
Okay. Yeah, I had a couple things. The first was, it felt like the conversation that we had about the cats, that the, basically the entire purpose of that, of that item, was to go from the past policy that's become known to the public as not accepting cats, or animal control not dealing with cats. And I think the result of that, after discussions, was that we were now in a place where the animal control officer would respond to complaints about cats, and pick them up as necessary. And it felt to me like maybe the language in the minutes didn't really say that.
Do you want to make a change to the language? Or do you want to take the action to give somebody the revised language, so we can move on those minutes? Or how do you want to?
Can, I mean, if there's just a quick way to say that, you know, that now the policy, or the policy has been rarefied, just some way of saying that the animal control officer will be responding to cat complaints. I don't have any perfect language for that, but...
I think that's fine. I'll amend my motion to include that the town animal control officer can now respond to calls for cat situations as well, as well as dogs.
Okay. And then the next comment is about October 6th. The comment that I would have was for our action item, item B, approval of bicycle pollution of main striping plan for Mechanic Street. I think it's important that that, I don't know if there was a strapping task force, but I don't really object to that language. It's more that what was approved was a significantly revised version of the plan that is really not, was not the bicycle pollution main proposal. We're not doing advisory lanes. I've had a few people be pretty confused about what was approved, thinking that we approved advisory lanes, and that's not what happened. So...
Okay.
I think it should say we approved a more traditional striding.
Why don't we just qualify the minutes to reflect that the plan that was approved was that, was presented during the meeting and not was in the packet?
I'll amend my motion to say that.
Okay. All right, anything else? Anybody? Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Roll call vote. Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna?
Janice, I'm you. Using a foreign computer. I, on the meeting that I was at, I am staying from voting on the six.
Well put, Jenna. Thank you. Allison?
Aye.
And Mark? Mark?
Aye.
And Bob, aye also. So one, one of them, it's a five zero, and one it's a four zero one. Okay, fine. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, hold one second, I'll get back to that, would be, would be adding into our four action items. The first of which is to discuss the bid awards for two wastewater projects, specifically Chestnut Street Sewer Pipeline, Pipe Wing, as it's printed, and Cobb Hill Road Culvert Replacement. Audra?
So David Bolstridge provided a memo in your packet. My apologies, the big spec was requested, and I forgot to send it to Janice. I emailed it to all of you tonight. But Dave could have answered more questions about either project. The, it's pretty obvious who the low bidders are for Chestnut Street, which is the pipeline, it's Ted Berry, and for Cobb Hill, it's Farley &amp; Sons. So yeah, if you have any specific questions about these projects, Dave Bolstridge can answer them.
Sure. Allison, go ahead.
Yeah, so my main area of interest is the Cobb Hill Culvert, and the memo was helpful. I just read it like lightning fast just now. But, so the first question I was going to ask was whether it was going to, we were going to have some kind of a box culvert. I see it is going to be a box culvert. Is it going to be an open bottom box culvert? Not that fish passage is like, but you're just concerned right there at this point. But is it going to be open bottom or closed bottom?
Dave, Dave?
I'm kind of like reading his lips. I think I thought it was a closed bottom, maybe?
I heard him say, I saw the lip ring say open bottom, but I don't know why we're not getting a sound from Dave. Dave, is your sound on? You're not muted.
Yeah, I think it's just not coming through his phone.
Yeah.
How about thumbs up for open bottom, thumbs down for closed bottom? Oh!
This is really high technology.
This is going to be more challenging one, but maybe Audra can help. The, I saw some mention of the water company.
Yes, yes.
In there.
I did have a discussion with Mike Ames. He's the superintendent for the main water plant over in Rockport, and they are aware of this project, and they're, they have it on their schedule. They're waiting to see, you know, they knew that we were going to be putting it out to bid, and they've indicated a willingness to cost share on this, because their infrastructure runs through it as well.
Oh!
We know exactly what that'll look like right now. I think they still need to make decisions on that, but they were very, very, yeah, it sounded like, it's very likely that they'll help us with the cost of that.
That is so wonderful. I thought for sure the response was going to be something different. So thanks so much for following up on that.
Sure. Marco?
I just wanted to ask Dave, and maybe you can do a thumbs up again. Are you recommending the low bidder? It would be Ted Berry on the Chestnut Street project, and I think there's only one on the, there's only one on the second one?
No, there's two. Mark, there's Farley &amp; Sons on the second one.
That's right, and Farley, yeah, I keep having to bring it up. And Farley &amp; Sons, are you recommending the low bidders on both, both projects? Yes, he does. Okay. Then I'm ready, I'm ready to make a motion. Oh, and one other question is, do we have budget to do these? Me Taylor. Okay.
That was part of our budget discussion for the wastewater department.
That was.
It was good to put it out there so people...
Yep, good question, Mark. Motion?
I make a motion that we, let's see here, the computer is taking a lot of time to update. I make a motion that we, I have to go to the other individual things, sorry, hold on.
Sure.
I make a motion that we approve the bid for Chestnut Street from Ted Berry Company looking for main, for the base bid of $27,600. And for the Cobb Hill Culvert Replacement from Farley &amp; Sons for $129,700.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah. Could we just have them make sure that the minutes reflect that there was going to be some kind of cost sharing agreement with the water company?
Point made. Point goes in the minutes, yes.
On the Cobb Hill project, not the other one.
Cobb, Cobb Hill, cost sharing by the water department will go in the minutes. Correct? Is that your request?
Water, water company, not department.
Okay, fine. Yes, that's, we will make sure. We'll make sure we remind our writer to put it in the minutes. Good catch, Allison. Roll call vote. Taylor?
Aye.
Jenna? You're muted again, Jenna, but I got your aye. It's all right. Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob, aye. Five zero. Thank you. Our second item on action is to, the action on a recommended snowball season pass refund policy. Audra, do you want to take the lead, or have Beth take the lead here? That's your call. You're muted, Audra. Audra, you're muted.
I didn't want to cough on camera, so I've been muting myself. So I'll just kind of introduce it, and Beth can answer any questions. But apparently, it's been going well with the early commencement of season pass sales. However, there have been a lot of questions about a refund policy, and this is specific to, you know, any sort of early shutdowns or non-openings due to COVID-19. We do not anticipate that we won't be able to open at all due to COVID-19. I think it looks very promising that we're going to, you know, be able to start the season. However, I think that, you know, it's important that we have some sort of assurances in place for anything unforeseen. So Beth can get into the policy, but it's pretty consistent with what a lot of the industry is doing. It's difficult for us to issue cash refunds in whole or in part, but there are other things that we can do in terms of, you know, credits. So Beth can talk you through what the idea is for refunds or partial refunds.
Have they seen this, Audra?
Yes, it's in, it's in our package.
Yes, yes, we have it. Thank you, Beth. Go ahead.
Yes. So Holly and I did quite a bit of research, looking at other ski areas and what they're planning on doing, and how they're kind of guaranteeing the season for folks. And this is pretty typical of what most places are doing. We did run into a few places that aren't even selling season passes, because they don't want to have to deal with any type of refund if there is a need for a refund. Every year, our season passes are not considered refundable. It's a chance that folks take for a lesser price than buying day tickets if they plan on skiing at the mountain quite a bit. So based on that, we were thinking of, if we are unable to open on time, which I think we're setting as a January 1st date, we will give a partial credit toward 21, 22 season. If we open up and we have to close early, we'll do the same. If we're unable to open at all, we will credit the whole, what folks paid for their season pass for the 21, 22 season.
Well, obviously, if anybody have questions, I won't start. Mark?
Why don't you go ahead, Bob? I've got a...
Oh, am I just, I guess the only, well, two questions, really. One is, I understand, believe the credit, the season passes is a great idea, the partial credit, but if it doesn't open, why is that this year different than any other year?
I think we're basing this on COVID, not weather related or anything else. This is just if the governor says, stay at home, no skiing, blah, blah, blah.
Right. So basically, what you're really saying in the short, if we close the facility for any reason, including COVID, there'll be a refund. Isn't that that simple?
No.
What's the difference?
No, because there are times when we have to close because of rain, or real heavy winds. Those are more on like a daily thing.
Yeah, no, I get that, but I'm saying if we shut down the facility for the year, for any reason, we're giving a refund.
No, this is just specific to shutting down for COVID. Like if there's another stay-at-home order or lockdown, it wouldn't apply to, for instance, we have a really bad winter in terms of weather.
So basically, we're saying if we're mandated to shut the facility down, that's when this would kick in? Is that right?
Well, I guess when driving out, there can be other reasons why you may shut down, besides COVID.
Right, and it's, I mean, it specifically says in the memo that the reason for the, we would, that this policy is only dealing with COVID-related shutdowns.
Yeah.
I mean, every year, we have the same issue, where we could say, well, what happens if we don't open at all? Or, I mean, realistically, that's not going to happen. We haven't had to have a policy like that.
Okay.
We know it is kind of a risk, like it is every year, but...
Got it. That's clear. Thank you. Allison, go ahead.
Sorry, I shouldn't have interrupted before.
It's all right.
So when you say a partial refund, I think I saw some places it said partial, and sometimes it's pro-rated. You hadn't figured out like a per-day kind of, is that, is the idea to make it pretty much like a daily rate that we would compute based on a certain number of average skiing days, or?
I think that's what we will do. It all depends on when, if and when it happens. Typically, the snowball budget is based on a 60-day season. So if we're able to get 60 days in, we've done great. If we get more, it's just extra.
Good.
But we also put in, if we have to close before March 1st, that would be the other date that we would be looking at.
Basically, say for an example, if we get, you know, some kind of COVID-related shutdown that causes us to close, you know, 20 days before March 1st, it would be, be looking at maybe roughly a one-third refund towards, or, is that for the next year, credit towards next year's pass?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions?
I mean, I think the whole idea is that we're just trying to make sure that people feel a reasonable degree of security going ahead and buying that season pass.
Right.
And that we're going to try to make everything fair. Nobody's going to have to, well, pull over their eyes.
Right. Mark, you had your hand up.
Yes. I think this is very important, that we make it real clear. I mean, and to clarify what I understand, in previous years, you know, if we have rain, if we have situations, we close. You know, that's, that's mother nature. We don't insure against mother nature. But this is different. This is, the state mandates we can't open, and we need to give that confidence to the people that are, you know, looking forward to skiing. Skiing is one of the few things that people will be able to do outdoors, you know, if, depending on what, where COVID is. It should be really safe occupation to do. And one of the things, in looking at the budget so far for our season passes, we're about over half of what we've been in previous months up to this time. It's, and I think a lot of people are nervous about buying passes. So if we can ensure that, you know, if COVID causes problems, we will, we will guarantee that they'll, they'll have their, get their money for next year. I think that's really important. But I am concerned that we need to get out and do this and publicize it, so people will feel confident in getting their passes. Because we are now two weeks away from the end of season ticket sales, and we're way down from where we hope to be.
Correct. Any other Select Board comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Taylor.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a smart plan, and a smart way to instill confidence in people, very straightforward. I'm definitely in favor of it. So thank you, Beth and Holly, for doing the legwork and figuring out the best way forward with it. And I totally agree with Mark that, you know, I think it's important for us to get the message out there that we're supporting people buying season passes as best we can, and reassuring them that you guys have done a lot of work making sure the snowball's a safe place for people to spend time this winter.
Okay.
Matter of fact, Beth, or Holly, why don't you just spend a moment talking about what you prepared so that people will feel safe in skiing this year, for anybody that wants to watch this meeting, or maybe the news reports will get afterwards?
I was, I was just going to say that last week, we put out a public-facing COVID reopening plan. It's on the website. And so I would encourage the community to go and look at that. It takes out a lot of the minutia of the big plan that you all saw a month or, month or two ago, and just sort of gives them the basics of what we're, what we're looking at doing right now.
In addition, I don't know how long you guys are going to be here, but you might want to talk about the success of the people using the ski lift to view the foliage and be on the mountain. Because I did it this weekend, it's been very successful. And maybe talk about some of the special things we're doing to help people for Halloween.
So we've been super successful. The parking lot has been full each, we've done four weekend chairlift rides so far in October, and we're close to $30,000 at this point. We're able to social distance, we have lines on the, on the grass to line folks up, and we have a constant line, pretty much the whole time we're running lifts. People are just very happy about being able to get out and about. Not a ton of locals, these people have been traveling to come to us. So it's, it's been, it's been really good. We are, we do have this coming Sunday scheduled, and then we've decided to do chairlift rides for Halloween. So we're going to open the lift 1:00 to 4:00 on Halloween, for folks to come out in costume. They can ride the chairlift in their family group or their traveling group. And we'll have candy, we're trying to get some of our partner organizations to help with getting, getting candy and/or handing candy out. We haven't really worked out the logistics of that, but we plan to do that in some manner.
Great, great.
So yeah, hopefully, everybody will be able to come out in costume on Halloween.
Beth, is this the last, is, what is the schedule for remaining weekend's days for lift rides?
I don't, I didn't hear the whole...
What is the remaining schedule of days that people can do lift rides? This weekend is the last weekend or not?
Just Sunday, and then on Halloween itself, and then...
Thank you, thank you.
I was going to add, to the Halloween, there's also going to be some pumpkin rolling contests that Jamie Weymouth is working with some families, and going to be putting that on together. So there'll be some other things going on out there.
Good. Get some nice big pumpkins. Very good. Mark?
I might, I might mention that for, you know, people watching this, and for the news people, we'll try and communicate once plans are further, further developed for Halloween. But I think it's important that we find something, as people know Pearl Street is not going to be closed, the street's not going to be closed on for the normal Halloween trick or treating. So this is a way, especially for the younger kids, where Halloween's very important. This is a way to get them in their costume, get them out, do something special. There'll be candy there for them, there'll be chairlift rides if they want.
Great.
It's a way the town can do something really special for Halloween, and I'm very excited about it.
Good. With that, do I have a motion for acceptance of this refund policy?
So moved.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, the policy for refunds for season passes for the snowball, based on COVID rulings and regulations.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Not hearing any roll call vote. Miss Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. Okay. On to item C, which is the, the action on issuing a request, a request for the expression of interest for Sagamore Farm. Jeremy, do you want to take the, or Audra, whichever, you want to take the lead here?
Sure. I mean, I guess I could start. If you remember, last meeting, we had talked about the RFI for Sagamore Farm. You had the memo at the time that I had drafted. You had a couple of tweaks you wanted along with that, as well as, you wanted to make sure the survey was finalized and finished and included in the packet, as well as you had some questions about the wetland information. So I have included, the survey is finished. I will say that there was, Allison had some questions about the water company lease up there. Bill Kelly is reviewing, reviewing that, that certainly that lease is expired. So now Bill is investigating on kind of what, what that means for the equipment up there, or the infrastructure that they have in the ground.
I can give an update on that, because when I was speaking to Mike Ames about the Cobb Hill Culvert, I also inquired about the infrastructure at Sagamore Farm. They actually removed the vault this past year, so that infrastructure is gone, and there's a real willingness to remove that tank as well. They're really interested to find out what the town is going to do with that property, and they just want to be kept in the loop of that goal on, and they're very willing to make sure that all of the equipment they're no longer using is removed from the site.
Good.
Thank you. There was some, I will say that we found another lease. There's a cell tower lease that was done with the town a number of years ago. So that has been shown on the, on the survey, and Bill is kind of diving into that one a little bit more, because obviously, there's no cell tower there.
Oh.
They pulled, they pulled out of that.
Okay.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, it is.
But that lease is still...
That would be a good thought.
Yeah.
I was at play for a long time, I think. I remember quite a bit of that.
All right. Comments and Select Board on this proposal for the RFOE? Or REOFK? Allison?
So, I guess, I'll look over the, some of the Vernapool stuff. I am fully supportive of getting the word out and starting to accept proposals. I do anticipate that one of the primary things that's going to come up is, are questions about, follow-up questions from the Vernapool assessment that was done. And then, because there were a few things that were left unresolved from that, it really was one thing. But then, also, the, the wetland aspect of it, the, you know, some of the areas where I think certain environmental groups are just, especially interested person people, some of those areas that have been focused on, I didn't see in the Vernapool assessment. I think there's going to be some concern around that, and that we, the Vernapool assessment that was done, since it wasn't, I think we're allowed to use that it wasn't, we weren't the ones to pay for it, but that the wetland part of this and a more extensive survey are going to be needed, because as soon as we start talking about different things that people might want to do there, the question is going to come up, well, what about these impacted wetlands? Or are there wetlands there? We're going to have these unresolved questions that are either going to have to be answered by an interested party paying for that, or we're going to have to pay for it. And it just, it's, I was expecting that the survey that Gertlin Dorsey did was going to be maybe, I don't know what's the word for it, Bob, that goes beyond just the...
Oh. Yeah, 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 as far as the survey goes?
Yeah, I mean, so we've got this boundary survey now, but doesn't, you know, it doesn't...
That's all it is. It's just a, it's just a meets and bounds proposal, and that's as far as...
I will, I will say, there were some questions about those meets and bounds. So I mean, for...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I agree, Jeremy.
It's important to have this done.
No, no, there's no question.
I'm not saying that it wasn't important to have that done. What I'm saying is that I think, I was... I was expecting that it, what we were doing, a, a more extensive survey that was gonna answer this, this is where the wetlands are, this is where they aren't. And I think it's gonna be an issue that comes up. And so, I guess my question is how much more would it cost to have the wetlands delineated? And does it, my gut reaction is that we should do that as a town and not leave it up to later throttling that, but if it, if it's a thing that it's gonna cost, you know, $50,000, then maybe that's not the right approach. But I think that some people, when they look at that, even just that Vernal Pool assessment, are not gonna feel that it is complete. And then the wetland part of it is gonna come up too.
Jeremy?
Should we try to deal with that now ahead of time or should we just kind of wait?
Good question. Jeremy?
I think Allison, those are great questions and good points. That said, you know, I do think, I can, I can, I'll reach out to Gartley and Dorski and see what the cost would be. I mean, from a regulatory perspective and a permitting perspective, to access and develop that site, the real critical questions from a regulatory perspective are the Vernal Pools. I mean, because wetland fills happen all the time. I mean, like it or not, people can get permits for filling wetlands. Now, when you're looking at Vernal Pools, if they're defined as a wetland of special significance because it's a Vernal Pool of a certain type, that's when things get really challenging and we may not have been able to use Sagamore Farm Road as an access because of the development that we need to do.
Right.
If it was too close for a significant Vernal Pool, which it's not based on this review. The other Vernal Pool, which is number one, I think in the back end of the property, kind of to the rear, I think that's where some questions were. So, so I think, I think Allison, I mean, your point's very valid and I think from a developer's perspective, that, that one key question on the Vernal Pool was very important. I think every developer that is worth their salt understands that when you are doing a development, you have to deal with the, the wetland alterations that may need to happen on a certain site. I mean, there is not a property main really that doesn't have some wetland on it. So, they do permit it. So, I can ask the question. I'm not sure it's needed in order to get the RFI out. I'd leave that to you guys, but we can certainly, I can get a price from Gartley and Dorski and have that to you by next meeting if you'd like.
Jeremy, Jeremy?
I've walked with Will Gartley and Natalie, I think who handles their wetland and stuff. And I think they have a very good handle on where all the wetlands are because they did do this. I mean, there's wetland flagging throughout the site.
Right.
I can ask them what that additional cost would be. They've got existing information out there. I can see what that costs.
Jeremy, if we go out now and ask for a, request for expressions of interest, depending on what kind of development it could be or whatever, isn't it gonna, gonna have to be some part of the process, an environmental impact report by a developer?
Sorry, Bob, you broke up.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry. I may try to be more succinct. It, it, as we said, expressions of interest, depending on what, what kind of development ideas may come across the transom, isn't there gonna be at some point an environmental impact report which would take into account all the things we're talking about as part of the development process?
Yes. I mean, when, when there's, when you're dealing with a resource and I mean, there are streams that run through that property and lots of drainages that come off that aren't streams. Every developer and their consultant knows what those are and if they're questioning them, they bring in the regulators. I mean, they assume, I will say, they assume first that they're streams. And then the regulator, DEP, would then come in and do a field determination on specific cases and let them know whether or not that meets the definition of a stream. But the wetlands are certain, you know, wetland issues is the same thing. I mean, they assume that they have to deal with wetland issues on a site and they plan for that as part of, part of their, their plan.
Right.
As much as they do for traffic, if it's a very large development.
Well, and my point is it doesn't hurt to ask what Allison's asking for, Gartley and Dorski, to find out what it would take to do that. That, that work's gonna have to be done by somebody at some point in time. No question. It's just a question of whether we do it in parallel or in series. That's the only question that I hear and I, given that environmental impact reporting must be done at some time, depending on what the development is, that information's gonna have to be available to the developer, whether they do it, we do it, or both. That's another part of the negotiation.
Yeah, and we could do, we'll say that a consultant probably, for a developer is gonna, if we do it and we have it, likely their, their consultant will review that anyway and probably give it a good look over because they're dealing with the regulators, you know? I mean, it's, if you do a wetland delineation plan, that's what that is. That doesn't go to the DEP and no one says, yes, that is exactly where the wetlands are, right? Wetland scientists will go out, delineate what they think the wetland is based on the soil types and the vegetation and all of that. And then they'll flag that wetland.
Okay.
In cases where some wetlands.
Also, just to, you know, the whole purpose of doing something like a request for expressions of interest is that, you know, you're getting sort of a higher level conceptual, not even, I wouldn't even say it's a proposal. It's a higher level conceptual idea of what somebody might be interested in doing with the site. So, it will give you a chance to sort of start that conversation with a number of different parties that might have some interest in doing something there. And I think that that, you know, might lend itself to
Right, right.
running parallel to doing further investigation at the same time.
Absolutely. That was my, that's my point too. Taylor?
Audra kind of answered the question I was about to ask. I think, to me, it makes sense to get the request for expressions out now. And then I don't think it does any harm for us to just be in information gathering mode. So, we can at least start to think about what types of proposals we might see down the line. And, you know, I think a discussion about, like Bob said, who may or may not do or be responsible for future studies is something that can be handled in a negotiation if there's something unearned. But as far as just hearing interest for now, I think it makes sense to get the expression our way out there.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree. Allison, again?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm fine with putting, putting it out there and starting to accept expressions of interest. It's certainly possible that there are proposals out there that wouldn't touch any of those areas that in my mind are very questionable with the wetlands. When I look at that Vernal Pool assessment, I, I feel that they missed stuff. But maybe there are things that people want to do that.
Correct.
You know, it just doesn't really matter. The main thing that I guess it's important to me that, and of course I'm only one voice, but I think that we're not just trying to, that the message goes out to any potential developers that we're, we wouldn't be looking for something that would just meet the minimum environmental standards. And so, when I hear you talking, Jeremy, about like, well, you can sell the wetlands and all these things, that, yeah, we get reprimanded all the time by, by things that are, you know, legal. And we realize, shoot, this is bad. We know this is kind of bad for the environment, but there isn't, they're not doing anything illegal, so we have to let them do it. But with the town, we don't have to do that. So, I just don't, wouldn't want something to get so far down the road that, you know, then it's like they're, a developer is paying for their own environmental impact study that basically says there are no wetlands and. I just want to make sure that the town is a good steward because that will be the main concern that will come up in tandem. Is I feel from people will be the idea that we're developing, that there's gonna be an environmental impact. I think that will be the main concern that people have. And so, we should just get out ahead of that.
Yep, I agree. Jeremy, your only comment on, on the, on your draft, and I know it's a draft, but is there a way to make it easier on the developers to put the links into the website rather than just say, go check out our website and find the stuff?
Yes.
If, if, is it all in one place where we could easily do that? Because that would be great because I, I think it just, I'm just anticipating issues with individuals who are trying to find the stuff. And it's very important for them to read all of it that we have. But that was my only comment on the write-up. Because it is, it is a request for expressions of interest and I think the way you put it, Taylor, I think that was absolutely correct. We're looking for, whether it's an orange or an apple kind of thing being proposed and then we get into the very important stuff as we get into it, which Allison mentioned and I agree with, we're, we're, we got a long way to go in terms of criterion and, and yeah, we're not, we're not tied to any standard of environment. We're gonna do the best we can for the town and, and get input on that. But my point is there is gonna be an environmental impact report. That's where that stuff comes in.
And I will say, you know, when we do that, we can definitely, once we get down that, as soon as we get down the road, that, you know, that far, we can make sure any developer that's proposing something there, you know, and quantifies the, the, what, the environmental impacts of their development, identifies to us how many square feet of wetlands are gonna be impacted. No developer, you're not gonna, you know, no project is gonna impact the same site in, you know, the same way. So, we definitely have the ability to, you know, and Allison, I hear you that there's a significant area in there. It's kind of up at the head of the road to kind of move winds back behind the solar farm. There's a large area there that is, is wet and I think that's the primary area that you're referring to. And I, you know, I mean, I've.
I mean, that's true. That's what I believe to be the, very much the man-made carpet, that just the town being really sloppy with our rattle pit over, you know, from back in the 1930s and. That I feel is what they correctly identified as like, there's like these man-made kind of things. The, what surprised me, having walked back there a lot, is when you get way back from back of the property line, there's like, all of a sudden you're walking in this area, you don't expect there to be, it's like puddles that are, you know, I didn't want to go through with my boots. So, and it didn't look to me like that's the same area as Vernal Pool one or whatever it is today. So, I just.
All right.
I think it would be good to release the assessment that was very proactively done by, I think, that other group. They shouldn't have a thing. I'm smarter than them to do that, but that, you know, to people that have local knowledge of that property, it'll make me feel better once they've looked at it.
Right, right. With, with, with that.
Yeah, everything you're saying sounds, sounds fine.
Great. Thanks, Allison. Jeremy, just to be clear, maybe the smartest thing to do was we could do, if we, I'll ask for motion in a minute, to make sure rather than saying there's documents are blah, 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 et cetera, let's list the documents we are aware of and, and where they're located very specifically. All right?
And, and Bob, I didn't, I didn't finalize all that because I need to get permission from the entity that.
I, I understand.
Now that I have that.
I understand. That's great. Then with that, do I have a motion to act on this item? Mark?
I made a motion that we, we, I don't know how to put it, that we issued a request for expressions of interest for Sagamore Farm with the changes that, in the signature.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any roll call vote. Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Bob. Five zero. Thank you very, very much, Jeremy. Thanks for this. It'll be interesting to see what comes of this. Going back to our agenda, we'll be talking to the appointment of a temporary contract code enforcement officer. Audra, Jeremy, who's to take the lead?
Yes, so this kind of follows on from the last meeting where you approved a temporary licensed plumbing inspector. We need somebody in the interim period who can review plans and Jeremy's come up with somebody that can serve in that capacity on an interim contract basis until we have a full-time code enforcement officer hired and ready to come on.
Okay. Jeremy, the recommendation?
Sure. Recommendation would be to appoint architect Rosie Curtis to do plan reviews as a CEO contract position for us for probably three weeks or so. I'm hoping we can have someone on board in three to four weeks.
Okay. And, and her role will be strictly plan review?
Yes. So, code officers, you know, have a lot of work that they have to do and they, they need to get certified in. Rosie can do plan review. She does them. She was a contractor. She was a developer, did some housing projects on her own. She actually built them. She's a licensed architect in town. She does a lot of work. She knows the code. She knows some of the contractors. I met with her. Steve met with her. I reviewed the whole process. And she's confident she can do this for us. And I think it's gonna be done, you know, efficiently and effectively and in a cost-effective way to tide us over. I can't do building plan reviews. I don't have the time, honestly, and I just can't do it. I don't have the experience enough to do it and I know that our fire guys have done plan, are certified code officers. They can't do plan reviews. It's a, it's a unique ability to do building plan reviews. So, that's the recommendation that you appoint Rosie Curtis for interim periods of contract code enforcement officer.
So, she will be contracted, not an employee. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Allison?
I guess I'm, it's confusing. So, okay, so the planning board, being the chair of the planning board, does present a conflict of interest or a confusion of interest or a?
No, I talked.
It's not typical.
It's not.
You know, these are untypical times, frankly, when it comes to hiring code officials. There are none around. And we had, I discussed this with Bill Kelly. And the planning board reviews, and he's confident that there are no issues with it. The planning board reviews site plan projects. She is not in a place to review building plans at that point. It has nothing to do with building a building. And they're very separate, very distinct issues. She will not be in that function reviewing building plans. They don't even get reviewed at the same time. Projects get reviewed by the planning board and they come in a month, two, three, four months later with architectural plans for review based on that plan. And we're confident that that's not gonna be a problem. Bill's looked at it. Again, we're talking about a three to four week period of time. I know what's in what we have, like in the pipeline with the planning board and what we have in line, pipeline for the projects coming in. I see no conflicts, no issues at all, Allison. And if Rosie ever did, we talked about this. She would certainly recuse herself in that review or whatever. We don't envision it being any issue at all.
Okay.
I guess my, my main concern would be that she would be inclined to recuse herself or more inclined to maybe not say something in a review. I, I really appreciate Rosie's comments during standing where these, even when she gets warned by a staff member saying that maybe she's stepping out of bounds or that this isn't actually one of the criteria of. I just hope her comments are helpful and beneficial and I would hate to see her like muddle in any way or to feel additional pressure. Because I already feel that sometimes the planning board is pressured too much to, to stay away from certain issues. Just in terms of, I feel like, I don't know. It makes me really nervous, not because I think that she would be, if there'd be any kind of an ethical issue, but that it just might, it would be a disservice to everybody if she had to recuse herself or chose to or, so. I would trust, I feel pretty uncomfortable with it, but I would trust that if you and Bill and Rosie all can subside, then it helps me.
I will say that I, looking at the schedule for the planning board, if we're talking for the next three to four weeks, Allison, and I appreciate everything you say, I really do, because I, Rosie's great. Her comments are valued and I appreciate that. My point when I'm sending that to the board is just to stay focused on, that stuff's good, but approval criteria, you have approval standards and you just kind of need to stay there. But we have one, two planning, planning board meetings ahead of, within that three to four week period is what we have. And two of them, she has already, we have already done preliminary pre-app meetings and site visits with them. And, you know, there's no, I don't see any issues and I know when projects are gonna come in building wise for those. So, I see no conflict. So, we have like two planning board meetings to get through before she will no longer be a contractor.
Mark?
I also, as Allison has spent a lot of time at the planning board meetings, I've been at pretty much almost every planning board meeting since Rosie was appointed as chair and when she was a member before that. And she is. chair and when she was a member before that. And she is very well spoken, very even keel. And I would trust her in this situation. And I think that what we need to look at is we are in unusual time. There are no other candidates and this is work that needs to be done. And we have somebody we, you know, as opposed to going outside and trying to find somebody in another town or something, this is somebody we know, we trust, we value. And I think it's, the special circumstances make this a good, a good move. And I don't know what else we could do and, and still get work done that needs to be done.
Thanks, Mark. Jenna? She's hitting the wrong buttons, Jenna.
All right, there we go. So I wanna just go on the record as saying that I share some of Allison's initial concerns and I share some of the other observations that have been made here. I would instantly think that it's a conflict of interest. If I were coming before the town and the chair of the planning board was also, I would, I think from a perception perspective, it's not the greatest, but I think that Rosie is phenomenal and the fact that she's willing to do this, when we, it really sounds like we're up against the wall. We don't have a lot of options. Not that she's in any, I don't wanna disparage her in any way, but I certainly can see both sides of this and I'm glad that she's willing to do it. But I also want, I want and do trust that the staff, the staff will kind of guide her if there is a difficult situation.
Okay.
Ninety-eight point nine or ninety-nine percent of the plans that get reviewed in our office are not projects that go to the planning board.
Right.
We'll just throw that out.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Tell you.
Okay.
One of the things that the board might consider is the, because this is a short-term situation, is an approval with a, with a trigger on it. Basically, give it 30 days and then we wanna report back on where things are at because this shouldn't go on very long because there, there is the potential of conflict. There is that potential. And we understand, as Mark put it well, we gotta do what we gotta do right now. And I get it, Jeremy. So I think we should, but I would suggest a trigger time period to, to revisit this if it continues.
Yeah.
And I hope she feels comfortable sharing her, I mean, maybe it'll be a great thing to share her opinion with people that, you know, building plans for review and
Perfect, perfect.
Maybe Doug, Doug got some great suggestions from her. He's, he has a lot of really good comments.
Right. Mark?
I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the appointment of Rosie Curtis's temporary contract code enforcement officer.
For no more than 30 days. How about that?
For, for no more than 30 days.
Second.
Discussion. Not hearing any roll call vote. Taylor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
And Bob, I also, five zero. Thank you very much. With that, we've completed our action items on our agenda. We are now involved in discussion items and, and for the rest of the meeting. The first of which is a discussion on the potential for, or need for a policy to allocate any potential open day sailor wind jammer licenses. Audra, as I understand, at this moment, we don't have, one second, Jenna, and we don't have any, any specific license that we haven't closed the door on yet, although we are investigating one. But this is, you initiated this discussion because this is gonna happen someday. Is that correct?
I would say at this point, we're, we still have the luxury of this being a theoretical discussion, but I don't see it being theoretical for too much longer, I guess. So
Good.
I think it would be good to
Perfectly.
Have a policy in place while it's still at a level where it's theoretical.
Okay. Understood. And a good, 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 good summary. Jenna, you had your hand up?
I will need to recuse for this item. My family has a business interest in this particular aspect of the harbor, so I am going to log off just for this discussion.
Yeah, you don't need to log off. You can mute yourself. But, but I wanna revert to the select board. Does anybody on the select board disagree with Jenna's need to recuse herself? Not hearing any. That I presume the board agrees with you. And just, just mute yourself, please. Jenny, you don't have to log off.
I'm good at that.
Yeah, that's the other part you're not so good at. Okay, so discussion. Mark, go ahead.
Okay. This is something I've had a problem with for a while, simply because I was, I think I was the only person on the board when, for the longest time, we had six active licenses. We had a seventh that had been unfilled. I think Steve will confirm that. And we finally voted, I don't know, four or five years ago to fill the seventh position. And at the time, I was concerned about it because we can keep opening up more room for more boats, but we can't bring more people in, a bigger percentage of people just because we have more boats. And we may tend to cannibalize the business of the people who've been doing this for a long time and maybe hurt our long-term strategies. Since we've opened up that seventh license, there has been now the, the big move for everybody to get a second boat. So now we have tremendous capacity for, for people that they have to fight harder to fill their boats. And I'm concerned that we even need to be, if a license goes through, that we even need to fill it because we have, I think, more capacity right now than with boats than we have people to fill the seats without it being so competitive and, and actually getting somewhat nasty. So I'm concerned about the need, I'm, need to be concerned, I need to be convinced that we have a need to fill a license if it comes open and, and make, make it maybe not fill again like we did for a number of years.
Okay.
Oh, and Bob, just one comment. Before you get too into the meat of this discussion, I just wanted to kind of put it out there that this is something that I've brought up to the harbor committee to discuss as well. And I just thought that given any policy decided on ultimately comes to the select board, it would be really great for you all to give the harbor committee some parameters around which to discuss this and come up with a recommendation to give to you. So things like what Mark just brought up, I think is a really good thing for you as a group to talk about. Like, do you even want to, you know, what's the number? Do you think that's too many? Do you think that's too little? All those sorts of things. That's gonna be really good baseline, you know, parameters for the harbor committee to, to kind of flesh this out and come up with a recommendation.
Right. Allison?
I, I definitely support having the harbor committee take a look at this and come back to us with some recommendations for how guidelines are approaching these types of decisions. But I think it also really needs to start with the harbor master. And the, for, for us to have kind of an understanding, a better understanding of all of the different variables down there. It's not just as simple as, you know, six boats or seven boats. Both do different things. They, you know, they have a greater or lesser impact on infrastructure. They offer the same or different services. There's a lot to consider. So to me, it has to start with the, you know, the harbor master kind of defining the issue. And it also depends on, you know, what type of applicant, you know, new applicant might come in. But I would personally love to hear from Steve a little bit on his thoughts about what we should be thinking and then also ways to frame the question to the harbor committee in a way that, so that we get useful information back. I'm not inclined to be too concerned about the, this, you know, protecting people's businesses so much because I think, you know, it was, I mean, some of the people that have been interested in having an additional boat are, they're, they're already part of it. So they don't think that, you know, they obvious, some of them obviously think that there's enough business to go around. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna be too too concerned about, you know, us protecting businesses. But I would like to hear more from Steve about.
All right. Steve, did you wanna make some comments and especially in particular, how to, how to proceed with this evaluation from your perspective?
Yeah, thanks, Bob. And Allison, that was definitely some good points. You know, you've gotta realize that three of the permitted boats, the sailboats, hold 20 people, 18, 22, and 24. And then you've got the Lively Lady, which is a powerboat and that holds, you know, right up there, 28, I think. But then you've got two vessels, well, three vessels that are, are the newer ones, and they only hold six people. So there's kind of a nice, kind of eclectic package right now. It gets, it's, it's a little odd because now for the first time, if you guys do want the harbor committee to actually say, okay, well, if we have more applicants for what we have permits for, what do we do? The, the harbor ordinance says they're gonna give preference to the people that have been there and have been already permitted and are doing the job they're supposed to do. They're, they're listening to the harbor masters. They're obeying the rules. They're, they're playing nice. So it gets a little, I wouldn't say awkward, but it gets a little harder for you folks because now you've gotta say to yourself, all right, well, what is this new applicant gonna do? Is it a completely different thing? Is it a new, a new type of trip? Is it a new product for visitors to have? Would it make our town better? You know, would it make it a better place? So I would think that the harbor committee could start right up to some kind of, something to that effect, that if there's more people that are applying for permits than we have permits for, which is the seventh, then how do they go about doing that, you know? Because they're in a three-year contract now. So it would be, that'd be a great thing for the harbor committee to come up with, to help you guys, advise you guys for any, any future decisions you have to make.
All right. Thank you, Steve. I, Taylor?
Yeah, I totally agree. I think that the, the harbor committee's the way to go. It sounds like, I, I know they've already debated a lot of things right around this issue. So, and it seems like maybe they should make it somewhat of a priority while they're working on stuff.
Yeah.
But I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear their thoughts. You know, I, I sort of, just on the face of it, kind of hadn't thought about Mark's point of view in terms of cannibalizing the business. And I've always sort of wondered if maybe it's better for us to take a step back and sort of let the market dictate how things work as opposed, less restrictive as opposed to being more restrictive. But I think Mark makes an excellent point. So I'd kind of like to hear what the harbor committee comes up with in terms of discussion.
Yeah, I, I think as part of that, we should, we'll have to give the harbor committee some general guidelines to help them on the path because this is the kind of thing you can study for three years and knock them up with the exact, exact answer. Or more particularly, these are your options. It doesn't have to be one answer to the question. But that said, let me, you know, address Allison's raised hand.
Yeah, and the other part of this is the, the part that Steve mentions in the harbor ordinance and how do we interpret that, this, this idea that we would give preference to the existing permit holders. And, you know, what, what does that mean? Does that mean that as long as you don't break the rules, once a permit holder, always a permit holder? And that, you know, that application should never have to be compared against the application of a new vessel that might wanna come in? And, you know, what kind of, what kind of message are we sending as a town to prospective new vessels that might be interested? I do think it's important that we work with, you know, some pretty outstanding, long-term people and vessels that have been there, that have done, you know, I'm, I'm not in any way saying that we should try to get rid of them. But I also think that we, we have an obligation as a town to understand what the, you know, the total market is. And, you know, I don't, it's good for us too, as we're negotiating contracts, to know, okay, well, is there like a whole line of people outside of the, the current group that wants to come in? Or is it kind of like we really, these are really the only people that are doing it and we need to be kind of curating and helping to support them to make sure that these businesses don't die? And I don't know the emphasis. I don't know if there's, if it's a high demand thing to be in Camden Harbor taking people out in a day's work capacity. I, I suspect that it probably would be. But it would, I don't know, I would like to hear a little bit from the harbor committee too, like what, how do we approach that idea that existing permit holders get preference? And should we be trying to see what else is out there?
Right. Agreed. Well, Taylor, you and I are liaison. I think we, our next harbor committee meeting, we should bring some of this from person and, and start talking about what
It's a good idea.
What we've all stated here, because I would agree. It's a, it's, and especially the idea, I think, of looking at what the alternatives are. So we'll, we'll, we'll take that action and go forward with it. And of course, Steve, you're a part of that also, as you well know. So you can bring your thoughts to the table at the same time. Otherwise, this thing can go on and study for six months. And that's just, it's been studied before for various factors and it took forever to get to, to get to some recommendations. But we'll try to accelerate that. All right, with us, we'll do. So with that, I'll move on to our next discussion item, which is Christmas by the Sea. Oh, I can't wait for Christmas. Who's leading that discussion, Audra?
So for that, we have a guest.
I can see that.
Yes.
Well, should we let the guest intro? I can see an initial and a last name. Introduce yourself to everybody since I already know who you are. But please.
Well, thank you very much. First off, I'll introduce myself. I think I know most of you. But I'm Joni Wambroth and I work for Camden National Bank. And I've worked with many of you on various different projects in the community throughout the years. And I'm really pleased, perfect community. And this year, Holly and I, and also Jeremy have been part of the, the conversation regarding Christmas by the Sea and what we should do this year for our local downtown businesses and our community and our families. And how can we do it safely and comply with the rules and still bring that, that special season and feelings to our families and, and the people that surround us and that live here? And also to those that wanna visit during that time frame, stay at our B and Bs and also our hotels. So I did share a layout of our, our potential plan for Christmas by the Sea. It was a little later in the afternoon. I sent that to Janet a little later. I don't know if that was distributed to the group or not, but it is in the hands of the town. And I'm happy to talk through that if you have the time for that. But really, I believe what we were talking about, Jeremy and Holly, is the use of some town space for what we're calling an upside down parade. Is that right, Holly? Great, thank you. She's nodding ahead.
[laughing]
Okay, thank you. And so I will look to Holly regarding the parking lot that we're, we're speaking about. But this year, do you wanna hear what we're, what we're
Sure.
Trying to do for the entire program of Christmas by the Sea?
Yes, give us an outline, please.
Great, thank you. Now, first off, we'll talk about the parade. That's first of my whole, my whole parade. So it's called the 2020 Upside Down Parade. And it was a drive-by parade with stationary installations provided by our local businesses that want to, or that maybe in the past have traditionally done a float that would drive down the road, right? And so the, the use of an optimal parking lot would provide us a great safe space that we can, we can make a circular installation of the floats that don't, that don't go anywhere. They're, they're stationary. For our families that have designated time to drive down through town, which would be decorated in a holiday theme, piped in music. The stores would be open, you know, if they so choose, or they would do their own programs, their own sales, which they always have. But the families could drive down safely in their cars, see the displays, use the, the parking lot, go around in that circle. And our traditional Santa that we've had for over 30 years, and his elf would want to join us this year again in person. So I met with Santa and his elf on Thursday. We had a great conversation. We're gonna take things a little bit differently with Santa this year by placing him in the display so that he's safely away from the families and the families are at a safe distance from him and they can drive by that area. And the children will still get that same, not the same, but an experience where they get to see and wave and how to stand and take pictures. And they'll be able to participate in that manner. So that's a lot different from the past, but it's in an effort to keep people safe. So next with our Santa options. Typically, in the past, we've had children sitting on Santa's lap, which unfortunately cannot happen this year. Right? So in, in replacement of that, what we would offer are autographed pictures of Santa and his elf so that they would at least have some sort of takeaway. And we would really, we'd find a way to distribute those safely. And the Penn Bay Chamber has offered their office for pickup of those photographs and they wouldn't be touched by multiple people. The staff, they would gladly hand them out. So that would kind of minimize the touch of those pictures to, again, keep. So that would kind of minimize the touch of those pictures to, again, keep people safe. Also, we would have Santa sightings. We're planning several different Santa sightings throughout our town. And when I'm speaking of Christmas by the Sea, in the past, we've had Rockport. In the past, we've had Lincolnville. But this year, we're going to focus on Camden. Because, you know, quite frankly, that's too many approval boards and too many people to go through just to have Santa visit and participate in their events and activities. And we want to keep him as safe as possible because, you know, he's been visiting us for a long time. So we're going to focus on Camden. So Santa sightings would be, the Lord Camden Inn has volunteered to provide him in a room this year with a balcony. So there may be Santa sightings at a balcony. Also, Lyman Morris is reviewing the opportunity to take Santa on tour around the harbor. Now, he would never reach a point of destination, but you have Harbor Park, you have the Public Landing, you have other areas throughout the town where they can see Santa drive by in certain places. Also, that's one Santa sighting that we're planning. In the past, children have been able to sit on Santa's lap and safely walk for Christmas. So that's going to feel a little different this year. And Santa is going virtual. So in his room, he'll have a great fireplace. And we are going to allow him to do virtual meetings with children. There'll be like, a website is being set up right now. There'll be a code that the children can access. It would be free as part of Christmas by the Sea and from the Camden area's business group. So they'll have their special time with Santa if we can get all of that word in, that's the goal. And then we will also still have our tours the night for Christmas reading. It will be in a virtual format again and part of the Santa delivery package that we've talked to him about. There are lots of different things going on in an effort to keep people safe. The tree lighting is another component to Christmas by the Sea that is extremely popular. So we have located a Christmas tree. We have an organization to install the tree and maintain it throughout the winter. So we're still planning on having our tree in Harbor Park, which I'm excited about. As you know, there are typically lots of people that like to gather around that tree pretty tight. So rather than having the normal gatherings that we would, we would still have the music, we would still have the countdown to the tree lighting, we would still entertain all of those components. However, we would do a FaceTime live event that could be broadcasted through the town, people's homes, hopefully on the big screen TV that's the town office, for people to see if they happen to be walking and out in the belt. We would be able to have it broadcasted in our local restaurants that have those flat-screen televisions so that people could safely view the tree lighting. So there are lots of different options. Do I have any questions so far? Because I have more items.
No.
Very detailed.
Yeah.
I'll read this, I'll get all my notes.
Why don't you finish up, and then we can come back with questions?
You want me to finish?
Yeah, please.
So along with these Santa activities, we would also entertain a scavenger hunt this year. There would be a touch-free scavenger hunt. So we would provide a link to different destinations where families could choose at their own well, their own timeframe, where they can maneuver around Camden as a family in a car to a certain place to check out for them. They don't have to pick up anything or prove that they did. And it's just an activity as a family, sponsored by Christmas by the Sea. So that would be another component of a fun, safe activity that families could do. We also have planned downtown music that would be piped in at certain locations because we know there's no singing this year. We want to make sure that our town feels extremely festive and holiday-oriented. So at certain destinations, certain areas of the town, we would request that we could play music. One would be in front of our bank because we have the electrical outlets to support the speaker system that Matt Brown has available for us. And we would use a traditional holiday station during the Christmas by the Sea hours. Like when people are shopping in the evening on Friday, when we typically have a lot of open houses and things like that in the past. This year, we're going to try to fill that space in that voice music, in festive, festive music. Along with that, we have reached out to the Garden Committee, the Garden Club. And we are really interested, and we haven't finalized all of these conversations. So what I'm sharing with you are a bunch of options and things that we're really working towards. Yeah, we reached out to the Garden Committee to partner with us on looking at Camden and how we might be able to decorate even more so than we already do. We typically do the, when we make it pretty festive, we like to do a little more this year with decoration. Nothing over the top, you know, not big candy cans and things like that, but more floral, more garlands, things of that nature to help our town a little bit more, a little bit more Christmasy, a little bit more festive and bring that joy to the family. We have, as part of all of this, what, publicizing in the newspapers. We've created posters for our businesses to put out. We're doing various social media announcements. And I will say that if you're not, if you haven't liked the Christmas, Camden is glowing, not Camden is glowing, Christmas by the Sea Facebook page, that I encourage you to go out and do that. Because every post we've made about Christmas by the Sea has had high traction. A lot of people are viewing it, they're sharing it, they're making comments, and they're liking that post. So go out and find Christmas by the Sea on Facebook and just review what's going on in the activity within that. Again, we'll have our website set up with a link to Christmas by the Sea Facebook. And we'll really be driving a lot of social media during the event, lots of pictures, if possible, around the community. We do have people that go out and take pictures of what's going on so that we can help promote our area, but also do so in a state theater. So that's what I have. Holly, do you want to add anything?
You've done a fantastic job there.
I know that there were some questions about the layout of the parade and use of that part. That's why I'm a little curious to question if I found that.
I mean, I was just going to add that I went out and drove around the parking lot. And it's not just a big circle. It's really, there's kind of a windingness to it so we could really create a, you know, a traffic flow through there. I've emailed all of the, all of last year's floats. There was 30-something floats. And so we need to hear back from everyone. I've heard from a couple, but that's it. And so we do need to get permission to use that parking lot for that, for that event on Friday. And it'll only be needed for an hour or two, I think, if we do.
Right. And that said, when you think about a stationary parade, you know, in the past, the floats drive by you and then they go to their respective homes or wherever those floats were created. So there may be some lag time that we should consider if we do a stationary parade and use in that parking lot area. Those folks may not be able to disassemble that right away. So we need to really consider that they might be there for a day. And are we okay with having that parking lot like a winter wonderland for a day during this holiday weekend or this special weekend? So consider that as well. I know a lot of people out there until one in the morning trying to disassemble what's around. And we'd really like permission to use as much of that space as possible for that weekend or at least until Saturday weekend.
Okay. Questions from the board or comments? Allison, you had your hand up earlier.
First, it looks to me like the YouTube livestream is not working. So that's just maybe something to analyze in the background there.
Yep, we'll check into it.
One quick solution to that would be for Janice to start
Recording?
Zooming from the computer to, you know, through Zoom. But then the other thing that, first of all, thank you for all this work. None of this kind of thing is my strength, but I know lots of people appreciate it. So I'm glad that people were good at all of this festive organizing stuff. I, the only thing, I mean, it all sounds wonderful to me. I just wonder if there are any, it's nice to have things just completely downtown. And if there are opportunities for town properties that are maybe right downtown, whether it be the Village Green or closing. I mean, I've been trying to brainstorm ever since this COVID thing started. Would it, you know, would a street closure make sense somewhere? And everybody's kind of nervous about that during the summer, but maybe it would be the right time to close Chestnut Street or Fortuna, you know, Atlantic Ave or even the Public Landing. If there were a way for us to try to do things right downtown, even like a drive-by float kind of thing. I mean, I'm supportive of whatever you guys have come up with as the best thing, but also would just want to say that are, be supportive of pushing the limits a little bit more in terms of shaking up things downtown. I love the idea of music. You know, it's good for us to try different things and shake things up a little bit.
I agree.
To you guys downtown, that would be good too.
Yep.
When I'm hearing you speak, Allison, I'm thinking of Atlantic Ave. In the past, we do shut it down for the parade because we have so many walkers that want to go through there. And I would actually, and now that you're saying that, we may want to do that again for the tree lighting to ensure that there's enough space for people, but also to have, if we have an all-the-club installations that want to be set up, it would be a good area around the tree to have additional installation.
Right.
And then Holly, Walk Through Bethlehem, which is not something that we as a committee organize. It's really the church that organizes that. We just advertise Walk Through Bethlehem in our list of events that are taking place. I believe that they have something that they want to request from the town regarding the Village Green, as you mentioned, using that space for something.
Right.
So I can have a proposal for that coming to the ground.
I think someone's made a request to Janice from the church, brought to the town office, to use the Village Green for their Walk Through Bethlehem for the, instead of doing it inside the church. And they were going to pare it down and make it much smaller. But that, it will be coming before you, but that's going to be something that the church will have to do.
Okay.
Because we don't, we don't have anything to do with that event.
Mark, you had your hand up.
I was, I was just going to say, I think the virtual events with Santa, with the room, with the porch, with the, you know, virtual meetings with the kids is wonderful because, you know, he's the only Santa that all the kids in this town have ever known. And obviously, we need to keep him safe because it's very important he be healthy on December 24th. So thank you for that, Jody, because that's, that's the real important thing.
Thank you, Jody.
It's very rare, but we get to see the real Santa, and we have for 30 years. So let's remember that he is the real Santa.
Thank you, Jody. Thank you very much. Should be, is, I don't have any questions of you. That was a great, great rundown and a lot of interesting things, very unique. And you got to think out of the box these days, and that's what you've done. Thank you. Jeremy, what? Yeah, that's good, I can't hear you. Jeremy is still on mute, man.
Sorry.
It's all right. You're up. Go ahead.
Okay, I was going to say, we can work with Jody and we'll work with her and look at the landing and maybe look at Chestnut, maybe on one, one side of the parking spaces. We'll look and kind of be creative to come up with some locations. And we can come back to you if you want, if you don't want to do the Knoxville parking lot. I get getting it downtown is kind of a neat idea. So we will come up with something a little more.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeremy. Thank you very much, Jody. Thank you, Beth and Ward too, of course. You're all, I know you're all working hard on this. And let's pray for a good, fun Christmas this year. With the, I've got some of the agenda items kind of mishmashed here. We're going to try to stay on the discussion items and then get to our discussion items. And we had a brief discussion on the Tannery RFP, the summary of where we're at with that. Jeremy, Audra, please.
Yeah, so as everybody knows, October was the date that we put out there in the advertisement as the date by which we were requesting proposals for the Tannery site. And we received two to date. And we've also received requests from two other parties for extensions. They would like to put in proposals, but they needed more time. So that's sort of the first, in the memo I wrote to the Select Board, that was sort of the first thing that we were going to ask you for was if you would agree to some sort of extension. And if so, how long would you be comfortable moving that out towards?
Okay.
Just one comment on that, Bob. There have been, as Audra said, we've received two proposals thus far. And again, we talked originally about 60 days and then we got down to like 50-some days. And so I ended up, I heard from two other entities, as Audra suggested, that's it, it's two other. And they requested an extension until tomorrow afternoon. So I said, let's, well, we'll extend it. I told them that already because the deadline was the 16th last Friday. And so I do, I do suspect we'll get two, or two new proposals by the end of the day tomorrow. Outside of, I've not heard from other, other entities.
Okay, okay. So the drop dead date is currently October 21st at 5:00 PM, is that correct?
Yeah, it's actually 4:00.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Mark, you had your hand up.
I was just going to say, why don't we extend it till, till Friday? Just to make it match what we did before. So if there's a, so Friday, the, would that be the 16th?
No, that, today's the 20th.
It would be the 23rd, sorry.
23rd would be Friday, if you want to go that route. Have there been any other expressions of interest besides the two you've heard from Jeremy?
Yeah, there have been two. Like I said, there were two, and they, I told them I was going to extend it out until Wednesday. And they both said, okay, and thank you.
Okay. All right, Allison.
I appreciate the spirit of your suggestion, Mark. I guess my tendency would be to leave it at what Jeremy has said. I, also in the interest of fairness to those that didn't submit applications, it's difficult for me, I'm sure a lot of us have been answering questions about this. And I was very emphatic with that original deadline that was set. I think it was nice and flexible that Jeremy extended it. But then it's like, that's what, that's what they've been told. And I think each time we kick it out, if we were going to extend it, it should be something that is extended enough that there's an opportunity for a newspaper site doll and for it to really be, you know, to get the word out there. Right now, doing that, you know, extending it from Friday isn't really enough time for new people that missed it before. I would just say that we should leave it at what it is. And then at our, hopefully at our, those will all get posted on the website, as we talked about before. We'll have the week and a half to let it settle in. We can browse those. And then at our next Select Board meeting, we could talk about what the process is going to be going forward for evaluating the proposals.
Yep, good, good, good points.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, good points.
It was just a suggestion.
No, I understand, I understand. Taylor?
No mistake either way, so.
I mean, there might be, maybe, maybe at our next Select Board meeting, we'll say, you know what? This, we didn't get everything that we wanted, or we want to ask some to revise and some to, you know, new people to submit. And maybe that would be the time to extend the deadline.
Okay. Taylor?
Yeah, just, so Jeremy, just to confirm. So if we just leave it at end of business tomorrow, you expect that you will have received a proposal from everybody that you've either talked to or expect to receive a proposal from? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I reached out to, I mean, people reached out to me right away when this RFP went out, a number of people. And I have reached out to all of those folks that reached out to me and said, I'm going to extend this out until Wednesday. Everyone said, thank you. Two of the people said, thanks. It's already in the mail to you, no problem. And they were appreciative of that, so.
All right, great. I would have to agree with Allison because coming from the business, not this kind of business, but if somebody offered a proposal and we worked hard to put it together, it became a matter of public record and we allowed the competition to, you know, take more time. You have to give the existing ones more time to recreate their proposal also, or you're being grossly unfair. So I would stay with the date of the end of tomorrow. And as, and maybe in November, we say, well, we need another 60-day cycle because we didn't get what we wanted. I'm making an exaggeration, of course, but, but that'd be fine. I think that's great. We'll hopefully have a total of four at that point in time of tomorrow afternoon. Great. Any other comments on that issue? Good. The rest of our agenda is really reports and priorities. For Audra, you wanted to lead with Town Manager Reports?
Yeah, there's just a couple of items that weren't in my written report that I wanted to highlight. So one of them, and this is in my written report, the MDOT Drainage and Pedestrian Improvement Project. So one of them, and this is in my written report, the MDOT drainage and pedestrian improvement project in the downtown area is scheduled to begin next week. And we haven't received a final project schedule yet from the contractor or the DOT's resident. But they have indicated that they're going to begin at the, at the public landing where the outflow pipe is going. So that's, that's kind of the first area that'll be impacted. I need more information from DOT because I would, I very much want to help them to make sure that they're speaking to all of the businesses and eventually residences that are going to be impacted by this project so that everybody is aware and knows, you know, roughly when they're coming through and what the disruptions will look like. So I, I, I'd add as much as possible. We still need a lot of information though if we're going to be able to, you know, communicate with people and answer any questions that I don't have yet. So that's kind of the status of that project. We've heard again from Patrick Adams about the MDOT pedestrian safety project that we started participating, I believe it was early March, right before everything shut down, or was it February? But in either case, they are ready to start scheduling the next phases of that project. There are more, you know, site walks. The first one will be myself, Dave St. Laurent, and Jeremy meeting with, to add a few other people from DOT just to go around to some of the sites that were identified during the initial meeting and kind of talk about the detail. And then after that, there's like a, a bigger site, you know, is open for more community participation. My apologies, my internet connection is not great, so I'm going to just get rid of my video for a second so I can talk without getting interrupted.
All right.
So the, the next thing, I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew. In my report, I put a live link to the committee feedback survey so that we can start collecting information from either current committee members, past committee members, or residents who have never served on a committee. We'll get more details of that up in more places, but I wanted to draw everybody's attention to that here initially. And also just remind everyone that on November 3rd, all, the majority of the staff in the town office will be working at the polls, so we will be closed to the public for regular business during Election Day.
Okay. One second, Allison. Anything else, Audra?
Those are the highlights.
I think Allison had a question.
I have a question. The first is about the MDOT project. So did I understand that correctly, that starting next week, they're going to be digging up that portion of the public landing that's kind of right over by the, one of the new picnic tables area?
That's what we've been told.
So that, I mean, that's a pretty big impact. So that's, that's a little concerning to me. Just, there are still so many people downtown. I mean, the public landing has been completely packed every weekend at capacity with parking. We've now started pulling the floats next to night of May. And so that's taking up a bunch of parking spaces. It's kind of like a filter to shutting things down. It feels like when there's still quite a bit going on and then to have a big, they're going to be drilling, I think, right, to get through the ledge there?
Yes.
So that, does all, does it, it just impacts a lot there. So that's, I was just, a little concerning. If there's things that we can do to try to help with that, then let us know. But I, that sounds like a very big impact. The other thing is that the citizen participa, or the committee citizen, whatever, participation survey, I, because I was a little surprised to see that in, a link to it in the town manager's report because we, we talked about it briefly when you weren't at the meeting last time, but there were, there were still a few things that I thought we were going to try to do. And that, just in terms of the information that we would try to collect from people that haven't already been participating. A big part of this for me was to try to get people to say, okay, I might not be on a committee or whatever, but these are some of my skills. These are some of the ways that I might want to be involved. So it's hard to, to really go and push that survey out. We can only do that so many times, but I don't know if it, I'm just curious if any edits were made to it or if it went out exactly like it was in our past. It would, a lot of that wasn't even collecting contact information or like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, in my apologies, I must have, I, I listened to the discussion. I think I misunderstood. I thought that you were looking for more detail on the other one, but I can certainly, I, there haven't been any responses to date that I've seen, so I can, I can make those adjustments and send it back out and keep the link the same.
Yeah, if we could, I mean, if we could just have one more chance to say, are we ready to go? Because then I think we should all be trying hard to really push it out there.
Yep, yep.
But I want to make sure we're at least getting people's contact information, you know, they're, we're at least getting their email addresses if they want to sign up for the town newsletter, if they want to be on Janice's list, I guess, the Select Board Agenda. Just some of the basic questions that, that we should ask them.
So we should just, maybe we should get it out, Audra, so we can take one more whack at it and keep improving on it because I, I agree, we need to, we, this could be a very useful tool, especially in my mind, for people who are not currently on committees and not currently engaged. I think that's the highest priority in my mind at least. Good.
Right. I mean, maybe we could take the one that's for their current committee members.
Yep.
And just send that out because we have, you know, a list of, of people and they could, you know, that could be a first round of things if you wanted to get moving on something right away.
Well, Audra, doesn't the, I didn't check the link recently, but the last link we had took you down two networks. One was if you were a current committee member and one if not. Is that still the arrangement?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. So it already, it already has the noncommittee trail to go and answer questions, but I'd like to just, we should all take a look at those to make sure we're covering all of the things we discussed about what we'd like to glean from the.
Yep.
Especially for noncommittee. That would be great. Thank you. With that, it's town manager report, select board reports. Mark?
Very quickly, another sold-out show this past Friday night at the Opera House. They've been doing a great job of having properly-distanced shows that have been very well, very well appreciated by a lot of people in town. So kudos to the people doing the work there, giving people a place to go that's safe and wonderful. The only other thing I want to mention, I usually bring it up every week, is please pay attention to your safety, to your mask, to what you're doing. There have been 16 now active cases in Knox County of COVID-19, three new cases yesterday. We've had an upswing. Waldo County has had 43 new cases since Thursday. So there's something going on on mid-coast. So mask, safety, washing your hands, all the distancing. Please be careful out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark, Allison?
Yeah, the main thing, Janice and I have been working to pull together the Camden cleanup for this year. We're going to do it in, or for this season. We're going to do the fall one in a slightly different way than we have in the past. In the spring, we do the Earth Day memorial cleanup in memory of Janice's dad, who was so enthusiastic about cleaning up, especially around Earth Day. But we're trying to, we're trying to do one for the fall too, that is not going to be our normal meetup at Hannahford and everybody gets your road assignment then. We have a spreadsheet that is almost done with road assignments and it'll be, it's like a, a public document spreadsheet that you can choose a road assignment and mark down that you're going to do it, the date. The supplies will be available on my front porch or my front yard so everybody can pick up their backpacks and peckers and trash bags and just mark down on the spreadsheet, this is the road section that we're going to do, the time we're going to do it. And then you'll be able to, people can email and let us know so that we can go and pick up the trash. So as soon as we get that ready, hopefully we can feature it on our new town website and people can see it there. But also, if you're eager, anybody who just knows they want to get started right away, can email either Janice or, or me and, and you'll get that going. So that is the main update from me. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that, Janice, that I missed, but.
I just, I, this was Allison's idea and I think that this, running it this way, I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it really works, will work well for folks that are, I actually think it will, will work really well as far as getting the roads cleaned up with people having a little bit more freedom. But I also think it's really COVID-conscious and smart, so I appreciate that a lot. And again, we'll keep you updated and that quick thinking on your feet, Allison. And hopefully we'll be in a position to go back to the traditional kind of group thing in April. But are you finished with your select board report?
Yeah, there she was. How about you, Jenna? Jenna, you have something else?
Don't want to steal the floor. I was just going to give a little plug for buying bricks. Good Christmas present for the library, $250. They have plenty to sell. They could really use it. They're working on a faulty HVAC system right now, just really trying to boost the bottom line. Had a great meeting last week. Some good collaboration with the town and the library going on. And that's really about it for me.
Taylor?
Yeah, I just, we talked about it at the top, but I intended to plug the chairlift rides at the Snow Bowl. I went out there last Sunday. It was such a beautiful day and I was so impressed at how packed the parking lot was. I'm very happy to see a nicely well socially-distanced line sprawling all across from the Triple T to the other side of the main chute. It was like, I was really impressed. And I just wanted to mention again how grateful I am for everybody working on that. And it sounds like, again, this Sunday and then on Halloween. So get out there on the last two days if you can. It was, it was a really great experience.
Great. Just a reminder again, everybody, as you said at the beginning, the next select board meeting will be on Wednesday, November 4th, which is quite different for us. It's one of the, I think it's one of the first times we've done a non-Tuesday since I've been on the board. Well, maybe wrong, but anyway, that's the record. And there was one other item on the agenda, which was a, the priority discussion on renewable energy and energy conservation. And Jeremy, was there something to update on the, on the electric parking, charging station?
Sure. Efficiency Main and Avant Grid, CMP's parent company, are doing kind of a joint request for proposals or requests for projects. And I had submitted a proposal to CMP for a grid-connected, grid-connected smart charger to be placed at the public safety lot. They're, CMP is funding make-ready work for that. They're doing only 60 ports in the entire state and the minimum port on a project is four. So not many communities are getting these. First word from CMP last week was that Camden made the list. I have, he has not finalized that. I haven't seen that in writing from him yet, but he told me on the phone call that we, we would be one of the finalists, so that is encouraging. That's going to be probably $16,000 worth of make-ready work to be done to bring grid-connected smart charger, four-port charger to the public safety parking lot. I know the Energy Committee's been asking about that and I did, did get that taken care of and fingers crossed we're going to get that. I all, you know, it, it does look like we will get that from Centennial. So that's exciting.
Yep.
And as far as the solar, Bob, just a quick comment on that. Knox County is, we talked about their solar project briefly and they have not made the decision as of yet, but they did interview the two companies and I'm waiting for a proposal from them on, on what we could get from participating in that project. So we are waiting. I suspect we'll have that within the next week or so, too.
Oh, thank you, Jeremy.
Jeremy, that's the project that Al's had at the airport?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, great. And thank you so much for the car chargers. That's a terrific thing to get done.
I mean, I will say that the town will have to, you know, will have to pony up some funds, actual, the charger itself. And when they say make-ready, they're going to do all the infrastructure, the transformer, everything that needs to be done so that we could actually just plug in the unit and then go from there.
Great.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you very much. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn until November 4th.
Second. Roll call, vote. Allison? Allison's yes. Taylor?
Aye.
We're missing Jenna because she lost her connection with Zoom, so there are just four of us. So, Mark?
Aye.
And Bob, aye, four zero. Thank you all very much and have a good evening.
Thanks, Bob. Be safe, everybody.
Take care.